Good morning with a microphone. That's great. We had a little small technical difficulty getting started. I think we're great. Welcome to our Forsyth County Commissioners. We actually have a bi-monthly briefing session and morning session discussion. And we have two items on the agenda today. One is discuss an emergency services assessment update that we've had. I've had consultants work on that. And we're also going to look at a site selection report for future development sites, particularly that are possibilities. So I'm kind of certainly looking forward to both of them. We're going to start with the emergency services assessment update. And I'm going to have Kyle Heaney introduce that. Thank you, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. So before we get into this presentation, I wanted to give a brief lead in to Chief Grayson's presentation here. Back in February of this year, the county contracted North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting to do an assessment of our emergency services department. And this really stemmed from a couple issues that had come up. So first off, we had gotten some indications in the manager's office around some morale issues in those departments. And then looking at some of the multi-year data, saw some trends that we really just wanted to understand a little bit better and maybe the causes behind that. And so we know that the Commissioners had committed significant resources over the last several years to our emergency services department. And really, we want to make sure that we had the data to make sure we're using those resources strategically to make the impact on our system. And so we brought in the consultants, started in February and worked for several months looking at multiple years of data in our system, as well as speaking with staff to understand what was going on on the ground. And you're going to see some of the work they did and the recommendations here this morning. But I did want to highlight two takeaways before we got into that. And I'm sure they'll speak to this too. The first was that we have an amazing team on the ground. Our emergency responders are passionate public servants who work incredibly hard to serve our community and they love their jobs. That was the first takeaway. And the second, as you may recall, back in the end of February, our emergency services director resigned. And because this assessment was going on, the manager's office made the decision not to fill that immediately. We let the three deputy chiefs of our fire 911 and emergency EMS leave those departments while the assessment was going on. And so while that was going on, you know, we saw a significant increase in morale in those departments. And that was backed up by what was found from the consultants as well. And so much so that on July 1, we made the decision in the manager's office to make that change permanent. That was one of the recommendations you'll see today was these departments are really working well together. They're collaborating without that position. And so we promoted the three deputy directors to directors of those three divisions. And I was going to let them come up real fast and just introduce you to them. So Andrew Davis is our new director of EMS. Jamie Foer is our director of telecommunications. And Brock Smith is our director of fire services. So if you guys don't mind coming up and just saying.
Hey Commissioners, how are you? My name is Andrew Davis. I appreciate the opportunity to be put in this position and I look forward to moving EMS forward over the next several years.
Thank you.
Brock Smith, excited about the opportunity and the changes. It's nice to have an outside group come in and take a look at what we need to do. It's kind of easy to get siloed and know what we do. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to make some changes and be able to serve the public better.
Thank you.
James Foer, I'm the director of 911. Appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that the manager's office has instilled in the three of us. Us three go back a long time, so we're excited about the challenges lie ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. The three amigos, right.
And they all have been with the county, have a significant history with the county, so understand the system too. So that was what I wanted to present. And I'll just let Chief Grayson come up and take it away from here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be with you here this morning. My name is Greg Grayson. I'm with NC Fire Chief Consulting. Been in the North Carolina Fire Service 40-plus years, retires fire chief in Greensboro. We work with cities and counties across North Carolina now to assist in matters like these and others. We'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a moment. With me today is my colleague Regina Goodett Crawford. I'll let her introduce herself in a moment. But she served as the chief of the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services. And she was our lead for the EMS portion of this work. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Greg. Good morning Commissioners, Chairman and Vice Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. I can tell you that we really enjoyed the opportunity to come in and assess the system here. We think you have a great system. Lot of people that are dedicated to make sure citizens of Forsyth County get exactly what they need. So we're excited and we hope to share some of that input with you today.
All right. Well, again, thank you for having us. And you know, I have a slide to say this, but I want to start out by saying your staff was very responsive to our group. Just as Ms. Crawford is leading the work with EMS, we had someone leading the work with 911 communications. And I had assistance with me to help with the fire lead as well. So all of our staff were very, very pleased with the reaction we got from your personnel. And we appreciate the opportunity to come today to share this with you. We do service the North Carolina League of Municipalities as well as the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, fire consultants. Most of our work is fire, but we have worked with a number of counties also in EMS and 911. So we have worked with over 25 counties and over 125 municipalities throughout the state in doing this type of work. And we really try to assist with whatever might be needed in the fire emergency services area. We do that with a great group of people. Some of our core folks are just represented here and they're literally throughout the state. Most of our folks are retired fire chiefs, but we have specialty staff, just as Ms. Crawford. And they really do an extraordinary job. Many have specialty areas, others are more generalist. But we're very blessed to have a strong team of people. Again, we have worked throughout our great state in helping to provide these services over recent years. We are an independent third-party group. And what that means is that, I actually live in Alamance County. Ms. Crawford lives in Guilford County. But you know, we come in not necessarily with any connection whatsoever to Forsyth County. We look at what you're doing. We look at data. We look at what the data says. We mesh that data with people who really know a lot about the subject matter and are very well experienced. And we look at best practices. What are other counties doing that's successful? And those come together to make recommendations to you. And we'll talk about some of those recommendations today. But at the end of the day, all we're trying to do is help you have the strongest, most sustainable system you can have. That's what we're after. And so in each of these areas and collectively as well. But we are independent. And we contract with Association of County Commissioners as an example. And so, you know, we have to have a high level of performance to be their provider and maintain that designation with the association. You're going to hear us talk quite a bit today about time. In public safety, time is so very important. And I want to just kind of frame that for you as we start today. The jobs that your personnel that we talk about do are more difficult because of time. Everything is a crisis situation. And we'll look at a couple pieces just to hopefully help frame that again so that you understand that piece. Time is very important, be it 911, fire, or EMS. All those are so very critical. I showed just a couple slides here to say if someone had a cardiac arrest right here, right now, you've got a great team of people. Defibrillator is available. The chance of them surviving is very, very high, 90% plus, if you can reach them in a quick time period. But with every minute that elapses, that chance of surviving diminishes pretty significantly. And that's that first chart. It's called the cardiac survival rate. Just every minute that passes, their chance, they may survive, but their chance of them surviving decreases. On the right-hand side, you see the fire model. It too is very, very time-sensitive. You'll see that not only the ability to save someone who might be trapped or unable to get out of a home that's on fire is one piece, but also the structural stability. And that's safety to firefighters as well. It diminishes very quickly over time. So both of those scenarios, time is very, very important in the work that your people do in these areas. We like to frame everything that we do in the framework of what I'll call Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith's kitchen's on fire. She steps away, she comes back, there's a fire in her kitchen. She dials 911. To Mrs. Smith, the response time is from the time she dials 911 until the fire department arrives. If her husband collapses in front of her and not responsive, her response time is the time she calls and asks for help until somebody is there helping. And so we try to look at everything through what we call Mrs. Smith's perspective. Now, there's lots of pieces happening. You have a call made, you have a call answered, processed, dispatched. You have a thing we call turnout time, from getting the call until wheels are turning. You have travel time. Travel time from the time the unit leaves, wherever it may be, the station, or base, or hospital, or wherever it may be, until it gets to the location.
We're also going to look at a site selection report for future development sites, particularly that are possibilities. So I'm kind of certainly looking forward to both of them. We're going to start with the emergency services assessment update, and I'm going to have Kyle Heaney introduce that. Thank you, Kyle.
Good morning, commissioners. So before we get into this presentation, I wanted to give a brief lead in to Chief Grayson's presentation here. Back in February of this year, the county contracted North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting to do an assessment of our emergency services department. And this really stemmed from a couple issues that had come up. So first off, we had gotten some indications in the manager's office around some morale issues in those departments. And then, looking at some of the multi-year data, saw some trends that we really just wanted to understand a little bit better and maybe the cause, some causes behind that. And so, we know that the commissioners had committed significant resources over the last several years to our emergency services department. And really, we want to make sure that we had the data to make sure we're using those resources strategically to make the impact on our system. And so, we brought in the consultants, started in February and worked for several months looking at multiple years of data in our system, as well as speaking with staff to understand what was going on on the ground. And you're going to see some of the work they did and the recommendations here this morning. But I did want to highlight two takeaways before we got into that, and I'm sure they'll speak to this too. The first was that we have an amazing team on the ground. Our emergency responders are passionate public servants who work incredibly hard to serve our community, and they love their jobs. That was the first takeaway. And the second, as you may recall, back in the end of February, our emergency services director resigned, and because this assessment was going on, the manager's office made the decision not to fill that immediately. We let the three deputy chiefs over fire, 911, and emergency EMS leave those departments while the assessment was going on. And so, while that was going on, you know, we saw a significant increase in morale in those departments. And that was backed up by what was found from the consultants as well. And so much so that, on July 1, we made the decision, the manager's office, to make that change permanent. That was one of the recommendations you'll see today, was these departments are really working well together, they're collaborating without that position. And so, we promoted the three deputy directors to directors of those three divisions. And I was going to let them come up real fast and just introduce you to them. So Andrew Davis is our new director of EMS. Jamie For is our director of telecommunications. And Brock Smith is our director of fire services. So if you guys don't mind coming up and just saying.
Hey, commissioners, how are you? My name is Andrew Davis. I appreciate the opportunity to be put in this position, and I look forward to moving EMS forward over the next several years.
Thank you.
Brock Smith, excited about the opportunity and the changes. It's nice to have an outside group come in and take a look at what we need to do. It's kind of easy to get siloed and know what we do. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to make some changes and be able to serve the public better.
Thank you.
James For, I'm the director of 911. Appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that the manager's office has instilled in the three of us. Us three go back a long time, so we're excited about the challenges lie ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. The three amigos, right.
And they all have been with the county, have a significant history with the county, so understand the system too. So that was what I wanted to present, and I'll just let Chief Grayson come up and take it away from here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be with you here this morning. My name is Greg Grayson. I'm with NC Fire Chief Consulting. Been in the North Carolina Fire Service 40-plus years, retired fire chief in Greensboro. We work with cities and counties across North Carolina now to assist in matters like these and others. We'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a moment. With me today is my colleague Regina Gaudette Crawford. She, I'll let her introduce herself in a moment, but she served as the chief of the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services, and she was our lead for the EMS portion of this work. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Greg. Good morning, commissioners, chairman and vice chair. Thank you for the opportunity. I can tell you that we really enjoyed the opportunity to come in and assess the system here. We think you have a great system, lot of people that are dedicated to make sure citizens of Forsyth County get exactly what they need. So we're excited, and we hope to share some of that input with you today.
All right. Well, again, thank you for having us. And, you know, I have a slide to say this, but I want to start out by saying your staff was very responsive to our group, just as Ms. Crawford is leading the work with EMS. We had someone leading the work with 911 Communications, and I had assistance with me to help with the fire lead as well. So all of our staff were very, very pleased with the reaction we got from your personnel, and we appreciate the opportunity to come today to share this with you. We do service the North Carolina League of Municipalities, as well as the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, fire consultants. Most of our work is fire, but we have worked with a number of counties also in EMS and 911. So we have worked with over 25 counties and over 125 municipalities throughout the state in doing this type of work. And we really try to assist with whatever might be needed in the fire emergency services area. We do that with a great group of people. Some of our core folks are just represented here, and they're literally throughout the state. Most of our folks are retired fire chiefs, but we have specialty staff, just as Ms. Crawford, and they really do an extraordinary job. Many have specialty areas, others are more generalist, but we're very blessed to have a strong team of people. Again, we have worked throughout our great state in helping to provide these services over recent years. We are an independent third-party group, and what that means is that, I actually live in Alamance County. Ms. Crawford lives in Guilford County. But, you know, we come in not necessarily with any connection whatsoever to Forsyth County. We look at what you're doing, we look at data, we look at what the data says. We mesh that data with people who really know a lot about the subject matter and are very well experienced, and we look at best practices. What are other counties doing that's successful? And those come together to make recommendations to you, and we'll talk about some of those recommendations today. But at the end of the day, all we're trying to do is help you have the strongest, most sustainable system you can have. That's what we're after. And so, in each of these areas, collectively as well. But we are independent, and we contract with Association of County Commissioners as an example. And so, you know, we have to have a high level of performance to be their provider and maintain that designation with the association. You're going to hear us talk quite a bit today about time. In public safety, time is so very important, and I want to just kind of frame that for you as we start today. The jobs that your personnel that we talk about do are more difficult because of time. Everything is a crisis situation. And we'll look at a couple pieces just to hopefully help frame that again, so that you understand that piece. Time is very important, be it 911, fire, or EMS. All those are so very critical. I showed just a couple slides here to say if someone had a cardiac arrest right here right now, you've got a great team of people, defibrillator is available, the chance of them surviving is very, very high, 90% plus, if you can reach them in a quick time period. But with every minute that elapses, that chance of surviving diminishes pretty significantly. And that's that first chart. It's called the cardiac survival rate. Just every minute that passes, their chance, they may survive, but their chance of them surviving decreases. On the right-hand side, you see the fire model. It too is very, very time-sensitive. You'll see that not only the ability to save someone who might be trapped or unable to get out of a home that's on fire is one piece, but also the structural stability, and that's safety to firefighters as well. It diminishes very quickly over time. So both of those scenarios, time is very, very important in the work that your people do in these areas. We like to frame everything that we do in the framework of what I'll call Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith's kitchen's on fire. She steps away, she comes back, there's a fire in her kitchen. She dials 911. To Mrs. Smith, the response time is from the time she dials 911 until the fire department arrives. If her husband collapses in front of her and not responsive, her response time is the time she calls and asks for help until somebody is there helping. And so, we try to look at everything through what we'd call Mrs. Smith's perspective. Now, there's lots of pieces happening. You have a call made, you have a call answered, processed, dispatched. You have a thing we call turnout time, from getting the call until wheels are turning. You have travel time. Travel time from the time the unit leaves, wherever it may be, the station, or base, or hospital, or wherever it may be, until it gets to the location it's needed. Then you have to access the patient and start providing care. So there's a lot of cascade of things happening behind the scenes, but we really try to look at everything. What's Mrs. Smith seeing as the end result? And we think that's the appropriate way to do it. So hopefully, this gives a little bit of understanding of that, that there's pieces of that model, but we look at the overall outcome. We were asked to look at your EMS, 911, and your fire department. And in each of those, all three of those, we talked with your staff. We listened to what your staff had to say. We had one-on-one, face-to-face, in-person sessions with your personnel, it was well-attended. We feel like your staff was very forthcoming. We had some EMS professionals with EMS, same with 911, and same with fire. And so, we listened to what they shared. They didn't hold back, telling us what their thoughts were, and that's what we asked for. We appreciate that. We told them, here's our questions ahead of time, so that they were prepared. We had folks that came in with their notes ready and ready to present, which was great. We took that information in each of the groups, and we came back to them with a survey. Here's what we heard. Help us put this in priority order, because there's many needs in any organization, right? But we said to them, tell us what is most important to you. What do you feel like is most critical? And it was a forced decision. They had to make some decisions, what was most critical. So that gave great indicators to us. When we take that feedback, we look at the data and be able to look at best practices across North Carolina and make recommendations to you. We did additional work with EMS beyond that. We looked at your EMS data itself, and we'll get into the mechanics of that in just a moment, but that is very important. Your past demonstrated performance, it's important to look at a large number of incidents, but it gives you a great indicator. We're particularly interested in what we call trend lines. Which direction is this going over time? And when you can look at, say, six years of data, you get a really good understanding. This is the direction this is going. And you can have a lot of, you know, concepts about why that is, but the fact is that it's going in this direction. We did some GIS analysis as well. We have a GIS specialist on our team who worked with your county staff as well, and we were able to do some modeling with GIS. We brought benchmarking forward, what we see in other counties. Ms. Crawford, as chief of OEMS, she knows about all 100 counties and worked with that for many years. She and I actually served on the State Emergency Response Commission together for quite a few years as well. So she's very well-respected in the EMS community and knows all those benchmarking data points and knows them very well. And we looked through that lens at your system. We also looked at your current EMS facilities. We looked at that from a safety perspective and functionality perspective. We're not engineers, we're not architects. We looked at that from really needs and operations. We did some additional work for you with EMS facilities. The information we shared today is very high-level. We understand you have a document that is much more detailed and has more detailed information, but we're presenting this today to you in a very high-level perspective as well. And we could not, again, have done this without your staff from all three departments. But I also want to commend your manager and deputy manager, because this is a progressive model. We've done this for some other counties as well, but many counties aren't looking at this data, many counties aren't trying to do long-range plans and strategic plans. We sincerely commend you for doing that, because when you look at, well, this is a need, what can we do with that? We can start moving this forward. Can we go all the way right immediately? Maybe not, but we start moving it forward, and then we look at what our performance is doing, we look at it again, and we say, are we going in the right direction? Okay, yes, we are. Then we move to the next step. So we very much are advocates of a continuous improvement model. What are we doing today? How can we improve? What can we do next? As the deputy manager said a few minutes ago, that internal feedback that we received is very positive about your organizational structure. While 911, EMS, and fire are all very closely related, each have their own demands, needs, issues, complexities. And so, the feedback we had from your staff is very much, we like this arrangement. We feel that we are, you know, we're being heard, that our needs are being met, that these are important pieces for Guilford County. We are out here providing core services. This is why local government exists, to provide and help people in their time of need. And so, they felt very, very comfortable with the model of reporting to the deputy manager. And, you know, quite a few counties use that. I actually served as the fire marshal in Wake County for a period of my career, and I reported to a deputy or assistant manager, you know, during that time. So other counties use that model as well. But with these core functions, we really did see a good working relationship between the three now directors. And we look for that when we come into, you know, an organization. Where are the hurdles? Where are the barriers? And I want you to know that, you know, our perspective from our entire team was, these folks are communicating, talking, sharing. There are some synergies that are good to have between the two, such as looking at data, looking at GIS. There's really valuable synergies between all three, but there's also value in having subject matter expertise in fire, in 911, and in EMS as well. And it's very difficult to find someone who has all of those credentials. I'll start with EMS today, and Ms. Crawford will come in and share some of the takeaways, but I'll give an overview of our discussions with EMS and some of the data points that we think are pertinent that you, as elected officials and policymakers, understand. We heard from your EMS staff, again, those relationships they have, some of the training and the tools that they have, and the protocols that they have are all very strong things that were recognized throughout your staff members. There's opportunities for improvement, and there is in any organization, but some of the top ones there was fleet, more opportunities for training, the facilities they work with, and some of the equipment, all of which can be addressed, especially over time. We asked questions about what's a missed opportunity. If we only did this, how could this help us? You know, what are some things that we're not doing we could? And we heard about peer support, behavioral health, more IT support, and the use of lieutenants within the organization, and why that was helpful and why that was valuable. So one of the things, I'll tie this back to this time thing that we started with today. Not only is taking care of a patient as a paramedic a huge demand, but the time constraints upon it, and what your folks see day in and day out, it really wears on folks. So a couple of the top pieces were things, having peer support and mental health, behavioral health, that's very important. And it same rolls over to your 911 and your fire folks. When they see people at the worst day of their life, over and over and over again, it really wears on you. And so, that is more well-known today than it has been in many, many years. And so, we recognize that, so do your folks recognize that, because they live that each and every day. We ask your EMS staff about what their vision was. How did they see the organization in the years ahead? They won't, Forsyth EMS to be a destination agency. In other words, a place that people want to come and want to work. They want to feel supported. They know they have some logistical needs, and they want to be paid a fair market wage. They don't want to be, they like being here. They don't want to be pulled away from somewhere else to somewhere else, but compensation, obviously, an important piece in that equation as well. So just to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what your personnel said, there's much more detail in your report, but that's just an overview. Demonstrative performance, looking at those incidents is one of the best tools that we have as outside evaluators to determine the current status of your system. So we looked at six full years, and that's really important now for both fire and EMS and 911, all three, all three really. But because we had the COVID situation, we really liked to look, what was happening before COVID, like back in 2018, and what's happening during COVID, and what happens after COVID? We think it is important to, when we can, look at all those, and we were able to do that with your data. We have an excellent data person on our team, and he looked at all of that data and was able to manipulate it through something called a power pivot, and be able to ask it questions and see what the data says. Your demand is over 62,000 incidents per year, or average about 62,000. That's a lot of calls, okay? So we go through those, and we start looking at what are those priority calls? What are those highest acuity, highest priority calls? And you had over 240,000 of those that we analyzed through this system. And so, when we start looking at those, we report that performance at the 90th percent. That's what's done in emergency services industry today. In olden years, I've been in since '82, in the olden years, we did averages. Well, average really only tells you half the story. So the standards now in the United States really look at, what is your performance 90% of the time? No agency is able to guarantee something 100% of the time. You're going to have multiple calls, you're going to have storms come through, like we have a lot here recently, right? You're going to have mechanical problems, you're going to have congestion, traffic problems. Things do happen that just are reality. So the measurement that the industry uses and the standards, the consensus standards are written to, is 90%. What is that 90% of the time? So you, as elected officials, when you're speaking to a constituent, say, well, what's our level of service? So we determine that for your EMS on these priority incidents. That 90th percentile is 17 minutes and 56 seconds. So if you were to be talking to a constituent, what's our EMS service delivery time? Well, you would have EMS there at 17 minutes, 56 seconds or less, 90% of the time. Now, they may be in an area that has a medical first responder, fire department responding, other assistants before that time, but we were very focused on what is the arrival time of your EMS units. And so, that's the framework we would encourage you to use, and as you look ahead into the future, use that. That is the way the standard is written. What's your service delivery 90% of the time? So we break these down by hour of the day and day of the week. We think that's important for you to understand. And you'll see something, I think, in a moment that helps to articulate that even stronger. But we looked, well, what's your busiest time of the day? That's 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. For eight hours, if it's 10 hours, it's 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So you have times that your system really loads, and then there's times that it backs off. And so, you're responsible for managing an overall system, right? So you've got to address these peak times, and you have a substantial peak time in Forsyth County, as you can see by this chart. The red-orange colors represent higher demand, the green colors represent a lower demand. We give you a few other charts that we think is important for you to see and understand. Your call volume is increasing over time. So as Forsyth County grows, as those of us that come through the county grows, that, those calls increase. And so, that demand is going up. This chart over on the right-hand side, that's on the left, on the far right, well, let's look at what's happening with travel time in Forsyth County. We're, again, interested in trend lines. So what direction is it going? And if you look at that trend line, you'll see that that is going up. There's a lot of potential reasons for that. Traffic, congestion, travel, call volume, call load, many reasons for that, but the facts are that the data says that that travel time for your units is increasing. The data clearly says that the call volume is increasing. So then we look at, well, what's that total response time doing? The good news for you is that it went up for several years, but it's now coming back down. So there's some improvements that have been made that's helping that total response time, and it is beginning to trend in the right direction, but it's happening at a time that your call volume is increasing, and then your travel time is increasing as well. So we went to all--
Can I interrupt you for a second? But what's the average 90% response time in the country?
So I can just tell you what the standard, the standard, if you look at the 1710 or 1720 standard for urban areas, it's really looking at your first responding unit being there in a travel time of four minutes or less for fire. And for EMS, it's really measured primarily at the nine-minute.
Nine-minute, 11-minute.
So we're nearly 100% out of whack on that.
Much higher than the standard.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what any of the numbers are in North Carolina roughly? Is that average kind of what that looks like?
That varies, depending on if you're in the eastern part of the state, or west or central. So it does vary. In comparison with counties surrounding you, you are still above that. You're not in sync with that.
Last question. Is that data readily available for counties, I mean, to get that number?
Absolutely.
Is it in a single place?
It is. It's, Nemesis data has it, but as you know, with our new administration, Nemesis data has been put on hold. The State Office of Emergency Medical Services can supply you some data. It would probably be from 2022, but it's a comparison. The last time the Association of EMS Administrators did that was in 2020, and then OEMS has done it in 2022. And I just conducted a survey for the whole state of North Carolina, which I'll be presenting in Asheville on August 3, and I can give you some data from that and send that to--
That'd be great.
Ms. Robertson, give you that. Overall look.
And our team has looked at systems in Cleveland, Burke, Buncombe--
Wake.
Wake, and Guilford, and also Parteret. We've looked at some other counties with this type of data as well, and we have that data for the time we did the analysis as well.
Very short question. For the purpose of this analysis, the definition of priority incident would be, in layperson's shorthand?
Okay. Make it very simple to you. Priority 1, 2, 3, and 4. So the priority would be, you need to be doing this within the 8 minutes, 59%.
And what would that be based on? 1, 2, 3, 4?
That would be based on the priority of a priority cardiac call goes down to level priority 2, 3, and 4, non-emergency. But you are, you've got strong wait times in Forsyth County, you're not in the percentile you should be. But there's work that can be done to improve that.
I'm explaining this to a layperson. How do I say, what's a priority incident when there's potentially a life at stake or life or health?
Priority 1, that's a cardiac arrest.
Right.
If that's what you're looking at, if you're looking at priority 2, that could be someone that maybe has just maybe a diabetic incident. Priority 3 would be someone that had a fall or something, and priority 4.
So in this context, when you say a priority incident, you mean you include priorities 1 through 4? Is that correct? Thank you.
Some situations may be, you know, non-emergencies, but those of the highest acuity, I'm not, this person's not breathing, this person's had a cardiac arrest, they've had severe trauma, they're bleeding profusely. It's a, we've got to get somebody there quickly, or this person won't survive.
Sure. And, but just for the purpose of understanding what's evaluated, you're not just including the priority 1 calls, you're including everything that would hit the priority scale of 1, 3, 4?
That is an emergency, but a lower priority.
Yes, thank you.
I would say priority 1 and 2. I wouldn't use priority 3 and 4.
Well, but--
It's the 240,000 that you had on that chart, are they--
They were given a priority code.
They got a code, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Yes. Okay.
Mainly priority 1 and 2.
Correct. Correct. Okay. We did look at your facilities, and you have a variety of situations with your facilities. You know, fire stations, we do a number of station studies throughout the state, and fire stations are a little bit more predictable about response into a community and what travel time looks like. Your EMS and ambulances are dispatched from wherever they are from. They might be at a base location, they might be at the hospital, they might be traveling down the roadway. So they're very fluid, but wherever they're dispatched from is obviously where that travel time starts at. But we did evaluate your facilities, your EMS bases, and take a look at those. We visited all of those facilities to see what some of the conditions and needs were there. Those facilities are listed there on the left-hand side for you, and you range from some 5 years old to some 50 years old. Of the six locations you have, only three of them, though, are operated by Forsyth EMS. So you have some that, you know, you're in with other types of facilities, such as Kernersville or Novant, other types of locations. And then, they're really, you really have in all of them, our staff felt like, and getting feedback from your personnel as well, that you have space needs in all of them today. So you're currently operating 12 ambulances from those locations, and as you look at the facilities, that will be on a piece that we recommend putting on your radar moving ahead, to look at your current facilities, modernizing them, trying to equip them, and provide them throughout the entire county. We have a few pieces of analysis that we think, visuals that are helpful for you to see about your EMS system before we move to some recommendations. The chart or graph over on your left-hand side of this, this is showing where your calls are occurring at within the county. And it's generally going to follow where population density is. So where people are is where calls are. Well, that really is representative of that. This one's just a strict, here's where the calls are occurring. I'm going to show you one a little-- And it's generally going to follow where population density is. So where people are is where calls are. Well, that really is is representative of that. This one's just a strict, here's where the calls are occurring. I'm going to show you one a little closer in a moment, that here's where the calls are occurring and here are where your care facilities are, which are high, generally high generators of calls. So that's this chart. So this particular one is that same chart looking at where's the demand. The red and orange represent those higher areas of demand within the county. And then those symbols that you see, it's it's those are your long term care facilities. You may not realize you have that many of those in Forsyth County. I think our team, when, you know, looking at this, it was very obvious where you had a a number of these here in in Forsyth County, which, you know, is a great thing. At the same time, you need to realize those care facilities generate a lot of call volume typically for need, especially with EMS. And so we thought it would be helpful for you to see that. But you do have, you know, locations throughout the county. We're going to take a look at that in just a moment. However, be aware of your your care facilities there as well. We did modeling for what four minutes from your current bases looked like and what nine minutes looked like. So if you look at that first responder piece is typically in the four minute. EMS often uses nine minutes. We've given you both of those. So the gray color represents a four minute travel time from your bases. The green color represents a nine minute travel time from your bases. But I do have to say that, again, it's and emphasize this, that it you're you're not always responding from those bases. You may be in transit back, you may be at the hospital, you may be somewhere, you know, else on another call. But as a model for you, we wanted to show you what parts of the county from your bases you are covering at both four minutes and nine minutes.
Any any way to take that? Can you go back to two slides? It'd be it'd be great to take that yellow background and superimpose it on the next slide. To what I'm talking about. You'd see what a high priority calls. Because it looks like it covers it, it looks like where it's missing is the is the from the city, the immediate western, northwest, northwest area is high priority, but yet it's kind of, well, no, no, it's maybe not. Maybe follow it more carefully. It looks like the yellow area is almost in that area.
Yeah, and it it almost always, and that's not unusual. We see that across the state. Wherever your population is, is typically what we're going to see. I think we were, you know, we were, we felt like it was noteworthy to you to look at the number of care facilities. So when you look at where those are in relation to your call volume, it's going to have a higher demand than your typical population. I think that's what we're trying to say there. That's a little unusual. But looking where your population centers, like you have an ambulance station in Kernersville. Kernersville is a a higher population center, right? You see it there on the on the graph. You have you have units or bases in those locations. But with EMS, they're not always responding from that base. You you don't hold on to that quite as tight as you do with fire.
Can I speak to that? Mr. Martin, I actually had the opportunity to ride with Mr. Davis to all your bases. There's a huge gap, and I can assure you that there was not a unit in any base that we visited. All the bases, there was no unit because they were out.
They were out.
And they were backing up if another station was out. So they were pulled there or either coming from the hospital. So there's a huge gap there that needs to be addressed.
Got it. Thank you.
So again, we looked at what what's four minute travel. And and that's based, you know, just on your roadways. It's not, it's not circular. It's based on the the distance on your roadways. The the speed, the vehicle sizes are input into the system, GIS system as well, you know, and and it penalizes for curves. It penalizes for intersections and railroad crossings and all those kinds of things. So this is a an accurate representation of what a four or nine minute should look like from your current basis. We think this is an important takeaway for you. And that is that as you're operating 12, 12 ambulances, one of the charts I showed you earlier looked at your peak demand. And we told you what hours that was. If you look, this is really representative of that. But this took all that data and said, okay, how many ambulances would we have needed during these hours of the day to handle the call volume? Well, if you start at midnight, 1 a.m., 2 a.m., 3, when you look at that, those those look pretty good, right? But when you move up into the higher demands, you start getting to seven, eight, nine in the morning, what you'll see is you've quickly exceeded the 12. And so that's when those longer travel times, longer response times are are probably going to be most predominant. And so if you looked at the total number of of ambulances needed during certain hours of the day, based upon the data, you'd see that 20 are needed in certain times of the day. We know you don't flip a switch at one time, but part of our recommendations that that Ms. Crawford's going to go through with you will say, start making improvements to those numbers. Gather the data, see what it looks like, determine if you want to make additional improvements. It is not unusual in in the counties we've worked with, and Ms. Crawford knows all all 100 of them, though, to start looking at peak time staffing, meaning that 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 out, those hours, the eight or 10 or whatever you choose to to operate with, those times need more resources. Because if you have a crisis during those times, you're competing with many more incidents at the same time. And there's some important numbers that she'll share in a moment that that we want you to grasp about how often that's happening. So this is an indicator, again, based upon those, that large number of incidents that's occurring. And then those needs to be able to to counteract those. So we have some takeaways, and Ms. Crawford will review those with you.
Okay. I know we've given you a lot of information to grasp and a lot of graphs to look at, but as Mr. I want to call you, Mr. Grayson said, 12 ambulances are currently operating in Forsyth County, covering 412 miles. That's a lot of coverage, and you're not meeting the demand there. So as Mr. Grayson said, maybe look at some peak times, adding where those peak times are, and you have the higher call volume, adding some peak trucks. And I've talked to Mr. Davis a little bit about that. The service levels, distribution from existing stations, 22% of the emergency medical incidents in the county occur within four minutes. So 74% of the emergency medical incidents occur in nine minutes. The travel time is a lot. So you've got to look at addressing that, and I think the peak time trucks will do that. Multiple EMS calls occur simultaneously 89% of the time. As I visited the bases throughout the county, I could see that there were calls that were going to 23, 39 minutes waiting. And those were not emergency calls, but you could see on the dispatch that they were waiting, those calls were waiting. So there there's a huge concern that you've got people waiting for response. And every citizen in Forsyth County deserves the same amount of response and quality. Approximately 21% of the time, all in-county units are exhausted. They are depleted. As I said, I went to every base, and there was not a unit there or staffing. And so that's something you've got to look at. The workload for Forsyth County EMS reports, 0.63 of their unit hour utilization is a common workload. That is, that's a lot. Your people are getting burnt out, and that's a huge issue that needs to be looked at. A desired healthy unit hour utilization would be 0.5 or less, and you're already exceeding that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
We have three franchise ambulance services.
Yes, you do.
And they commit to one ambulance, 24 step all the time. So I take it in your analysis, you did not include those three ambulances?
We did not.
And their locations, that would be.
But they are running basic level calls. They're not running.
But they're they're prepared to do the the priority calls, too. I mean, they had to make a, I think I'm speaking acronyms on that.
So it's my understanding, I just want to clarify, that the priority data points in this presentation was priority one calls only, so critical. And the franchises are supposed to help, and Chief Davis, please come up, with the other priority calls. But I'll let him speak to that.
Yes, so we do have the franchises. So during the daytime, they provide two ambulances per three of the franchises. So that's if they have six ambulances, they'll put them in there in the daytime. And then evening time, if they have the staffing, it's three ambulances. We try to put them on the lower acuity calls, the priority two, priority three calls as much as we can. But as you said, sometimes we have to have them respond to the priority calls. But this assessment was just of our EMS resources. Because in a in a perfect world, you know, the convalescent units, the franchises, they're doing all of the.
Exactly.
Point to points, and and we would like for them to be on the lower acuity call and have our higher trained, advanced DMT and paramedic units respond to the priority calls. So right now, it's kind of the closest unit goes, not really based on what the credential level is of that truck because of how overstretched the system is. The closest ambulance goes to the call because it may be an EMT ambulance, and we would rather have a paramedic ambulance, but we know that a ambulance is better than no ambulance.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So the recommendations, and we have 12 for Forsyth County EMS, would be increase the number of paramedic ambulances, especially during peak times, as we talked about during that time when the there are the higher call volumes. Keep the current organizational structure, because we think you have a good base, and some of the changes that manager and Robertson has made, help with that. Make some changes to the span of control. A lot of people, you know, are reporting to too much of a span of control. So you've got EMS, fire, 911. Make those co-level or concurrent, that they could report to their respective directors or lead people. Utilize data analysis and strengthen the use of analytics. We talked about development in the past, and I've worked with Forsyth probably over 20 some years. They had lieutenant positions that could help some of the weight of the span of control. So adding those positions back, giving the opportunity to prepare personnel for growth at Forsyth EMS is a great opportunity to bring those lieutenant positions back, especially for training and being able to help with that purpose. Address administrative staffing needs. So those are the recommendations. Any question on any of those that I need to go into greater detail? Okay. Make modifications and improvements for the facilities. As I said, I actually visited most of the facilities. Your newest facility is the Grand Preveiler Building at Station 8. We did find with our group that there was some mole in some of the buildings, and that is your newest facility. So those things need to be addressed. They're kind of low hanging fruit that you could go in and look at that. Reevaluate some base locations for planning for future locations. Again, I think your Patterson and your Novant were my main concerns. The people at Patterson basically have a unit that they put in a garage, and they have a code to get into the Forsyth Tech facility. And if there's not a key badge there, they can't get in. So they have no opportunity to go to the restroom or be out of the elements. Just those were big issues. Novant has a facility, I did a study for Novant, was over there quite a while. I realized that that's a little cubby hole, where you've got two recliners that they have to sit in. I think if you're running a 24 hour shift and you're getting the kind of call volumes that we see across the country, they need better. I mean, you're expecting a lot from them. The best we could do is give them a better suitable location to be able to relax on their downtime, and they don't get much downtime. Utilizing the vehicle, emergency vehicle technicians for maintenance. When we looked at your vehicles in Forsyth County, they are 15 years old. There is duct tape and other things trying to hold those units together. And I understand you're getting very little knowledge over the years about the ambulances that are driven here. But again, they need, you need a specified technician that can repair those. And I'm not talking about just the cosmetic issues. I'm talking about their units that are needing to be repaired, such as your motor, your transmission. And you don't have a specialized mechanic in the county government system to do that. So our recommendation to Ms. Robertson was to please look at identifying someone at the county garage that could be dedicated to do that and bring your units, if possible, those that are salvageable, up to par. So that's a big concern. You know, we know you can't go out and buy a whole fleet of 15 ambulances. We understand budget, you know, issues with that. But I think you could dedicate a specified person to do that, and we've had that discussion with her. Develop a written strategic plan for Forsyth County EMS, long term, three to five years. What's your plan? What are the low hanging fruit that you can address now? And where do you go from here? So there's some things that you can do now as an option. And then reevaluate the use and effectiveness of the APCO, Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocols. Forsyth is the only one, there were two in the state of North Carolina that were using that, medical priority dispatch. The rest of the, basically, 100 counties use medical priorities, and they don't use the APCO. Nothing wrong, there are three major systems. I don't know what your 911 system prefers, but I think that could be looked at and evaluated along with your medical director. So those are basically our recommendations, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have with those.
Great. Thank you.
And with that, with that emergency medical dispatch system, and a little bit of response to your question, Commissioner, is those are categorized as Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, and Echo. Delta and Echo, it's it's just, that's the way that system's built. Delta and Echo are the highest acuity calls. So as we look across the state, those that in in that system that are used, those those tell you the the ones that are are most critical in response time. All right, let's let's touch base on Forsyth 911, and we'll switch over to that for just a moment if we can. Again, very dedicated group of of staff that work diligently. They've real, many of them truly, it was it was obvious when we were talking with them, you know, they truly love what they do, and they had a lot of passion. We had a 911 center director from another county there as part of our our team, as well as another subject matter expert on CAD systems or computer aided dispatch systems. We met with your your staff, but they also had an opportunity to go and observe your staff working in with the equipment that they have and the systems that they have as well. Your staff gave great feedback. They feel that they're really functioning well with their current director and that they have very capable people. They had some gaps as well. So there were some issues about some county policies relative to hours. These folks work either some, your fire work 24 is an example, the others work 12. And it it wasn't matching with some of the ways that they were earning time. And I know that you have been, understand you've been working on that. At the time we did this, that was very high on the list of of concerns that needed attention. They also recognized that while they love their director, they know he's very, very heavily worked and has a tremendous amount on his his shoulders. I'm going to give a quick, quick plug. The the staff said, you know, he calls in here every night before he goes to bed and said, I'm getting ready to go to bed. What's happening? What do you need? You know, that that level of dedication from from your director. And so they recognize he he needs some help. And then just updating, they they've had quite a bit of turnover in the organization, so updating the training documents and training manuals. That was a a gap that was was noted. We asked that same question again about missed opportunities. They feel like that it would be optimum if they could work from the Station 9 side out at the airport as their primary and use the downtown as a secondary. And then really providing, addressing some changes. You know, COVID changed a lot in the workplace, and it changed a lot in public safety and public safety areas. So there were several pieces that they they brought attention to as missed opportunities that post-COVID, relative to discipline, that they feel like should be readdressed. And then also having more opportunity to interact. You know, they're answering the call. They're listening to that person who who's having a horrific time. And again, they hear a lot of that, but it's also important for them to know the perspective from that paramedic on the ambulance or know that perspective from your squad or know that perspective from a fire agency so they can see what, see the other side. And that works two ways. That's a two way, two way street. And they said, that's a, that's a missed opportunity we could do more of. And some of the the most important concerns were addressing some of those policies that spoke about earlier, strengthening strengthening mental health. We we noted how that was really important for all your providers, but 911 staff really, really had a a piece of importance with that. Recognizing you've got different generations working and and trying to pull together, and that that pulls policies and the the work with those policies together. Again, they they mentioned market compensation as well, just as your EMS folks did. And they had some particular concern with their their requirements for being on call. And so we've relayed all of that in report into the county. And I understand several of those pieces are being evaluated and looked at. We had seven recommendations for 911, and that was to to establish an assistant director, the workload that that person's doing, the hours they're working have a tremendous amount on them. So establishing that assistant director and also solidifying some of your quality assistant, the quality assurance. You know, what what's happening on this call? What's the outcome? Your medical director plays a very important piece of of this equation. And so looking at at what that call processing time is and being able to work with EMS on that and work with the medical director, a very important piece of the equation. More training needed and updating those training pieces and and manuals is just over time. And I think, you know, during the COVID years in particular, there's so, there was so much stress and workload and issues that. stress and workload and issues that unlike many other local governments, things slipped during that period of time. And so we see this as an opportunity to, to bring that back up. The fourth item is looking at that Station 9 as a primary answering point, and downtown as an alternate due to your staff's recommendations and desires there. Increasing your staffing and ensure that you have eight telecommunicators on duty. One of the challenges in 911 and all your public safety areas is finding good people to, to work and being able to fill the spots that you have. Obviously, fill the spots you have. Our, our center director from another county looked at the workload and the data and the numbers and said, "If you had eight people working at all times, you know, this, this is where, where you should try to get to." And so that's why we, we, you know, identified that in there for you. And then looking at, at, you know, your, your performance with your 911 staff on your fire dispatches and EMS dispatches in particular. That's where that 90th percentile comes in. That's where you look at, well, what's the, what's the consensus standard say? And what's our performance? What number could we shoot for to improve? Work on that and continuously report that. And then reevaluating those annual leave and sick leave policies, because these folks work more than the typical eight-hour day, and a day to them. You know, we work with a lot of mergers with specifically fire departments. That's probably one of the first questions we have to do in a merger is define what a workday is. And that's when we have a nonprofit organization, for example, coming into a municipal organization. And, and, you know, you have to really define what that is, and you build your systems around that. And so we saw an opportunity here to, to address those pieces as well. Any questions on 911? So we'll shift over to the fire department piece. And, and I chose this, this visual because your, your department has a very long and rich history here in Forsyth County. In fact, I'll, I'll tell myself in the years, back in the 80s and 90s, I was over here a lot. I was on the state code revision committee and, and the director, or assistant director at the time there, he was the chairman, so we met here a lot. And so when you look at the, the history and the, the, you know, transition and outcome of your organization, it has a very rich history and one that is, is take, your folks take a lot of pride in. I think that's a point I wanted to drive home with that is that they have, have, they're part of a system that has, has a lot of pride and dedication from your personnel. So some of the strengths that your staff identified is, again, making, making fire another standalone department. They, they're very pleased with that change. Applaud your manager and, and your support for helping make that happen. They, they are comprised by some very multi-talented people. And your fire service providers, they, they are a resource to your fire service providers in knowledge and capabilities. And so that's been the history of your program, is really having top-notch people who can come and help on incidents anywhere in the county. And so they, there's a lot of pride within your personnel about having trained and capable staff. And again, they, they wanted to applaud their current leadership. They had nothing but praise for their, their current director, because he came up through the system. He knows, he's worked those jobs, he knows what it is, he understands what they do. And they feel that he is a, you know, leading them in the right direction. Once again, some of the gaps that this group identified is working those non-traditional hours. These, these personnel work 24 hours at a time. That's very typical in the fire service. And so correlating that with your leave times, again, high on the list of needs. Stabilizing the department, they have had quite a bit of turnover. People have left to go to other fire departments in the area. They brought new people in. Now, at the same time, that's a gap, I'll say to, they said, "This is an opportunity too, because we've got good people, we just have to train them." Maybe in the past, they had people that, that came in very well trained, but now they say, "Well, our opportunity now is to take these folks and train them, because we've lost so many people to other jurisdictions in recent years." And so that was identified as well. The age and condition of the trucks, as, as Ms. Crawford spoke to a moment ago about some of the EMS units, that was a concern as well. The emergency vehicle technician piece rolls over in, into this too, but it's someone who, who has experience working with, with emergency response vehicles. And there's some different standards. I'll go down to even just tire wear. The tire wear is different on a, on a fire response vehicle or an ambulance than it is a, a general services vehicle or parks vehicle, right? So there's some differences in the way that maintenance is performed. Also, the group identified the need for a shift fire investigator, somebody who's really focused on the investigation on each shift. Many counties use that model across the state. We see that as the best practice. They brought that forward and said, "We really benefit from doing this. We could do a higher quality, higher quality work." Their, their input was to, "How can we make this better? How can we make our department stronger and better?" And those were all in the context of which they, they spoke to the gaps. The concern, some concerns they had, we're here today talking to you. They were concerned that these recommendations would never go anywhere. And they've seen through the manager and now you that that's not the, that's not the case. They'd like to see their staffing improve, their apparatus, equipment that they respond in improve, more career succession planning, as is happening in a lot of the fire service. People retiring, and people need to be prepared to take those next steps, those next roles, those next promotions. Your folks identified that as well. And then being competitive, once again, you've, you've heard that across all three. We, we, we want to have competitive pay with other agencies. We want to keep the people we have. We want to retain. Retention's very important. Keeping the people we have, keeping their talents, and keeping them here in Forsyth County. I include a, a chart here. We weren't doing your, your analysis of your fire system in this, but it's important to recognize for you, I, I put this in to simply say that there's a, a national consensus standard on what the performance for a career fire department or a department in an urban area looks like. And there's another standard out there that looks at the, the performance for volunteer, primarily volunteer and primarily combination fire departments, particularly in suburban areas and rural areas. And so for many years, your, your staff have helped to put personnel on incidents and on scenes. But now there is a consensus standard that, that addresses that. And we often use this type of chart to look at, well, is the area rural? Suburban or urban? And what's the level of performance for your fire responders? So I mentioned this to say that your, your squad units that respond, you know, they have, have historically been a part of those, those personnel responding. But the fire service is advancing there, particularly with changes in volunteerism. I really think that has, has driven much of that. As a state, we're losing about three, three, three and a half percent of volunteers per year. That's a net loss. So you look at the number of people coming in, but you're losing more people than are coming in. So volunteers, the volunteer dynamics are changing quite a bit. And this is really the model, this particular one is, is around that volunteer and combination standard. We had eight recommendations for your fire department. Look at that staffing program with Vienna again. That was started some years back. And you're really one of the few that are doing that particular type of program. And so we think revisiting that, looking at what you're doing, and determining what alternatives might be there. We provide some information in report to, to help support that. We think revisiting that was, is an appropriate step. Look at your squad program. Again, there, there now is that consensus standard for departments. Where are they meeting that at? Where are they not? Where are your gaps within your system? So we typically try to look at what's your service delivery system look like? And how does this, how does this play into this today? And so we think it's appropriate to, to relook at that. And when you look at travel times and service delivery times, heat maps like you saw on EMS and others, and look at the, the current program, determine the, the current operation and the validity of what you're doing today. Again, look at those, those leave times. I understand that's, that's in process, but that's an important piece to, to ensure that your personnel feel that they have that kind of equity and that you help to, to keep the people you have. You, you have that focus on retention. One of the, the challenges is that one of your, your shift supervisors is on a squad. So that means that where he goes, that squad has to go. And other counties have, have used a model of having that, that supervisor more independent, that they can go anywhere within the county and not tied to a particular geographical area. And so we had encouraged you to take a look at that and having that shift supervisor that would be able to go anywhere in the county where there's a need throughout the, the county. We encourage you to conduct a workload analysis. We do these for, for counties as well. It wasn't part of our scope here, but it looks at the, the personnel, the hours they work, the training they go to, what time do they spend in, in code enforcement, plan review, new construction? It, it really dissects all of their time. And there's a model that determines, do you have the correct staffing or not? We heard we need more staff, and we said, "Well, you'd have to do this to know that." And, and we didn't, that wasn't part of what we did. But we think you going through that, that process of looking at what your current staff is, what they're doing, their workload, and determining if it's appropriate or not would be a, a great next step for you. The apparatus and equipment, keeping that in excellent shape, not only the squad units that, that respond, but also your airport firefighting unit that is headquartered at the airport. We know that that's not necessarily directly with the county. We understand that's through the airport, but there is a new truck that's ordered. But, you know, the, the current truck has some challenges. And so we just say, keep, keep up on that. You know, if you, when I retired a few years ago, if you had told me that fire apparatus would double, have doubled in cost in five years, and it would have doubled in the time it took to get equipment, I probably would have shook my head a little bit. But that's exactly what's happened. So the cost of our apparatus has gone up significantly in the last five years, and the time and delivery is typically now two to three, two to three years from the time that you order equipment. So you have to do the best you can with the equipment you have, keep it well maintained, because it takes time to get new equipment as well. But you do have a new, new ARF truck coming, but we encourage you to, to strengthen your maintenance programs. Internal training program, you know, that goes back to what I said earlier. While, while they talked about the career succession, they said, "Well, we've lost a lot of people, but our opportunity is we've got some good people here. They're just young in their career. They need development, they need training, they need, they need to be put into the, the proper training, proper classes to be the, the highest quality people possible." And one way to do that on the number eight piece that we'd recommend you take a look at is have some career ladders. Now, to, to move from, you know, firefighter one to firefighter two would require time in service. It might require some certifications. It might require, you know, their, their performance to be, meet certain standards. But having those is very typical. I'll say as, as fire chief in Greensboro, when we, when we put in some of those career ladder steps, it really helped our retention of personnel, because we typically lost people in those first couple of years. But when I can come in and say, "Okay, if I can do these things, I get to move to a firefighter two. Or if I do these things, I move to a firefighter three." We, we saw a significant improvement of retention by doing that. So we'd encourage you to look at that for your organization, because people tend to want to stay where they are if they can. And along with everything else that we have, have shared with you. Any questions on those, those eight items that you'd like to ask?
Yeah, I have a question about technology. You did, you dusted that pretty well. But I, I think this afternoon, this body is going to act with regard to some equipment purchases. And I have learned recently how expensive they are. Radios, self-reading apparatus, things that have to be brought up to date. You're, you're nodding because you, you know all of this already, you know? And a hook and ladder is only a three and a half million or something. They don't cost too much. And I want our first responders to have top drawer, state-of-the-art equipment. And I would assume, you know, that you would agree with that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You know, you're, their lives depend on that equipment working. When you pull, we call it a hand line. When you pull a hand line off the truck and you go into interior of a house that's on fire, you're, you're in what's called an immediately dangerous to life and health environment, right? You're gonna, it's, it's, you can live and die either way. Their lifeline is literally that hose that they have with them and the air pack they're wearing and the gear they're wearing, which all has gone incredibly expensive, and the radio that they're carrying. Those are not nice-to-have things. Those, those are essential pieces of what they have to have. But if, if they're, you know, in that process and the truck fails and they lose their water, bad things happen. And so we just, you know, having the, having proper equipment. And, and engines as well as ladders, you know, can last at least 15 years, sometimes 20, depending on how, the, the run volume and call volume. But they have become incredibly expensive. And when we do county-wide analysis, we, we really used to focus on, on apparatus and buildings. Now we have to drop that down to radios, turnout gear, air packs. All those things have become just as demanding as the bigger pieces were in previous years.
And you didn't mention drones. And I think with it, it's a separate group here in the county. You know, there's a capability now of a drone to deliver an AED to a site within minutes and it's, you know, straight lined at 200 feet AGL. That's a little faster than
Right.
any motor vehicle.
Right. And, and obviously that has to be coupled with training for, for personnel. And then, you know, many community paramedics help with that throughout the state as well.
Well, I want to thank you for an efficient and excellent presentation. Not all of them meet that standard.
Thank you, thank you. So just in summary for you, you know, support your directors. These, these three folks, to our entire team, impressed us as professionals. They know their business, they know what you're doing. Support their, their needs and their requests. Your manager has, has demonstrated us a significant commitment to these groups and teams and staff members. So there's many things they can implement and mitigate. Looking at data, looking at reporting it, refreshing it, that, that type of thing. We encourage you to keep a focus on 911 call processing time. You know, your folks were really on top of, of fire dispatch calls as an example. They rattled it off to us when we asked. They knew, you know, they knew that. But stay on top of that, because that's one of the, the most efficient ways that you can, can improve service delivery, is get that call dispatched as quickly as possible. Look at any of your policies that might be harming your higher performing personnel so that they don't leave, that they stay here with Forsyth County and, and become future staff members and have a, a long-term career here in Forsyth County. Look at your facilities and look at your infrastructure. We did not do an overall, you know, placement of facilities here. That's something we certainly would recommend. You have to pair with that what you want it based on. Do you want it based on that nine-minute travel? And it will show you where some gaps are. We would say to you though, that, that looking, the first piece of that is looking at those, those peak hours and, and where your needs are in those peak hours and using a peak time improvement. Adding some, some units and personnel, looking at what that's doing to the system. If it's going in the right direction and the trend line's going well, look at that again. We, we recognize that's incremental. That's what continuous improvement is all about. But we encourage you to look at, at those with your bases. And then, you know, and that's really a driver to all of your staff pieces that we heard in all three areas, both 911, fire, and EMS, is that, that level of service that you want to provide. So we, we threw a lot at you today. This is intended to kind of summarize the, the pieces, the main pieces that we, we talked about. With that, Ms. Crawford and I are glad to answer any questions you might have.
Additional questions?
Yes.
Yep.
I had actually hoped that the study that, that y'all conducted would include some specific recommendations on site placement. What would it involve to get that additional level of analysis?
Yeah, we, we've talked with your manager's office about that. That's, you know, we do, we, we probably do as many fire station location studies as any, as anything we do. So it does, it's a deeper dive with GIS. There are some maps that we, we did obviously with this. We can provide that to your GIS. But looking at, at the, do we want a nine-minute travel time or not? We think that's appropriate. And then you can look at where those facilities. You do have current facilities though that, that fall into the area. This is a high demand. This is a, a good location. You've got care facilities around it. But the, some of the facilities you have also need attention in bringing them up. So it's kind of a two-piece. One, yes, locating some new facilities, but others are well, pretty well placed. They just need to be modernized.
I'll just, I'll follow up on that. And like Chief Grayson said, that was not in the scope of this study. We have taken the data that they pulled from this and are working with our Matt Forsyth, our GIS team to start working on that as we speak. So that's something that we are going to provide to you.
Other questions?
Chairman Morton, can I add one? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I wanted to make one recommendation, that I think you've got great partnerships with Baptist and Novant. I think there's an opportunity there to maybe collaborate with them to see if you could expand some of your bases or improve those. Because you have existing bases that you could look at. That would be the recommendation I would have.
And I've, I've also had some preliminary conversations with the city manager. So as they are also looking at the state of their kind of fire facilities, as well as, as we're looking at our facilities, are there opportunities to possibly co-locate? And those types of things. So preliminary, as we are both working on our own kind of capital improvement and infrastructure plans, but I do think that there's some opportunities in, in that regard as well.
I don't have questions, but I would like to say especially to County Manager Robinson, I appreciate that you have divided these departments into three departments. I think that's a wonderful idea and, and I thank you for this information. I'm just one commissioner, but I would like to ask you in the upcoming budget to make some of these priorities. You know, each time that myself and the chairman and the manager have met with the school system, I've tried to, I've tried my best to make them understand that we have so many responsibilities and school is like 36% of our responsibility. And so I see today that we may be neglecting some of our departments. So I hope in the future that we can meet some of these needs. I think it's desperately needed for our citizens, but thank you. It was a good report.
Yeah, I was just going to conclude and say thank you very much for being here and it was certainly not, not great, not good news in your report, but it's information that we needed to hear. And that's important and I appreciate our, all of our fire and emergency staff for being here to kind of be, be a part of that and support that effort and appreciate all that they do, because as you said about 10 times, you know, I mean, that's, that's how we get things done, that's what makes all of this happen. And I think the message of the, of the leave issues and those kind of, that's just something that, that's probably a lower hanging fruit issue for us to work on. But I appreciate all the work that you've done and, and you certainly give us plenty of, plenty of information to think about and some, some good recommendations to track. We've had, we as in the vice chair and the county manager and I have discussed the issue of benchmarking in a whole lot of areas and there are a lot of data points in this that it would be great for us to benchmark with the other urban areas, but kind of, kind of the five, including us and, and see kind of how we, how all that looks. And then that gives you a way to, I mean, benchmarking is kind of, because that, that sort of filters in ability to pay versus what is the ideal. And we, and then we find out how well we're doing in that. So anyway, we'll appreciate your time and being here. We've heard about this study various, but we haven't heard the study, haven't seen it but, until today, but we've heard pieces of it and appreciate your listening and your frankness. So thank you.
And if I may add, I think that the, the challenges in recruiting and retaining personnel and information regarding the average response time were the signals to us that this area needed substantial work. And the first step in that was an overview of professional analysis of the kinds of approaches that we could take that would be strategically effective. So thank you.
And I will say again, special thanks to Chief Grayson and Ms. Crawford. We've had lots of conversations and we really appreciate the candidness. There have been a lot of things that the team has already addressed and so what we will do is kind of follow up and provide you all with an update, a written update on the items that we have done, the things that kind of are in progress, that they're working on, and then obviously there are some longer term types of things. But again, the three of them are fantastic and they really have started tackling these. And so I'm also excited to show you the things that have already been checked off the list and certainly appreciate the board's support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to get that information back from that survey, Ms. Robinson, that will help show you all 100 counties. We had about 98% feedback, so I'll share that and that'll give you some comparisons. Thank you.
In closing, just want to say thank you to you for your public service and dedication to the people of Forsyth County and we appreciate the opportunity to work with your staff.
Thank you.
We take a break.
Our vice chair has requested that. See if we can do about five or six minutes and we'll be right back and we get set up for our next presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our five minutes didn't do too well. But we just get nice and touch face with a few of those. All righty, we are ready for our second report on site selection. This is a question I have had great, great interest in, and it looks like Kirby's going to end this, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today with what promises to be an exciting report. I think we're excited to see the results of this thing as well. As background, as the board will recall, you set aside $250,000 of funding in the 2022 PEGO for the development of an employment center identification strategy. Last July, we released an RFP, and the board ultimately selected HGR Engineering at its October 3 meeting. Quick background on HGR, they are a national firm consisting of engineers, GIS analysts, communications experts, and economists who have extensive experience in site selection services. And for this particular report, they partner with Jones Lang La Salle of the Carolinas, which is a commercial real estate firm. So the goal of the study was to work with county staff, obviously, city, county, planning and utilities department staff, and local economic development partners like Greater Winston to identify a list of sites across Forsyth County that are suitable for industrial development. The final product, which you have before you today, is a detailed site inventory analyzing key components of each site, such as infrastructure capabilities, environmental conditions, topography, encumbrances, and other relevant physical features. HGR has also estimated the costs required to make these sites shovel-ready, and that includes land acquisition costs, site prep, and required infrastructure development. There is a, a part of the study that is not in your printed spiral-bound copy, but you'll see in the PowerPoint, and that is a little bit of additional analysis around the Tanglewood Business Park site. And so you'll recall, we, there was sort of a core group of industrial sites that HGR was going to identify and study, and then the board approved some additional services funds as well. And so part of that additional services, we asked them to say, you know, it's been a while since we looked at Tanglewood, let's step back, take the information that we have now, look at the investment the board has made in that site over time, and say, you know, where are we? How do we reframe our strategy? Do we, you know, does this continue to be a viable commercial site for development? If so, what do we need to do? Where do we go with that? You'll see part of that in the presentation as well. So beyond that, HGR will present a high-level review of their findings. So again, you've got a 72-page report in front of you, much like the previous presentation, this will be a high-level review, and of course, the full reports are available for your reference. Before we get started, I'll just quickly thank HGR and JLL, JLL, for their hard work on this study. They've really been great to work with. I appreciate the time they've taken to understand our community and sort of their thoughtful analysis around these sites. And I'll also thank our partners, our stakeholders here, city, county, planning, utilities, and Greater Winston, would certainly appreciate all of their involvement as well. So I will introduce our team today. This is James Schappert. He is a professional engineer, he's our project manager. Nick Seba was our utilities SME, and then Brian Sapp is our siting specialist. They're all with HGR, and James is going to take it away from here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate Kirby for everything he said. First, I just wanted to thank everybody for letting us do this study. We've really enjoyed this, and your whole team has been excellent to work with. We work with municipalities throughout the state, and we have really, really enjoyed this. It's been a great partnership and a lot of really great feedback from everyone, so it's been wonderful, and I can say that truly knowing that it's not always the case. So I've really appreciated the opportunity to do this, and our team has as well. So with that, we're going to get started a little bit, and I'll do my best, Commissioner Wilson, to do, to make sure that we live up to your expectations here. So, so we're going to talk a little bit, just kind of through this, so through our project purpose, how we identified the constraints, study areas, the stakeholder engagement, which Kirby referenced a little bit, how we actually identified sites. And then, as Kirby mentioned, there is a Tanglewood analysis section to that, and what we are, once we get through this today, we have all of the work done, and there's going to be an additional kind of small technical memorandum to supplement the document you currently have that goes along with that. And we'll talk about our cost estimations and the conclusion, which includes potential recommendations for you guys to consider as the commissioners and for the county and the city as well, to how to kind of move forward with some of this to make this viable for your community. So our project purpose, right? So I think it's always very important to understand what the purpose and what the goal is for what we're trying to do. And our goal here is really to help Forsyth County be competitive and bring in development. That development does a few things for you. It encourages growth for your, your business and encourages a better tax base. It also encourages people for jobs and creates a job fair essentially. So we looked at four, four areas to begin with, which were advanced manufacturing, health and life sciences, aviation and aerospace, and headquarters for major employers. Those were kind of the areas that we started to focus on, and that was part of the purpose and goal. So as we went through the study, the first thing that we did, and you heard the previous presentation talked a lot about GIS, and we used a lot of GIS in this, in this as well. And I don't have every constraint shown here because it's a little overwhelming when you look at all of it, but to give you an idea, so some of the things we did look at were environmental constraints. So the map that you see in front of you, it has wetlands, water bodies, and streams. And the reason that's an important factor is because when you're developing a site, topography plays an important role in that. In addition to that, permitting plays an important role in that. So avoiding areas that require a significant amount of earthwork and grading, avoiding areas that require floodplain permitting, items like that are as, to the best you can important. And as you can see, in Forsyth County, you have a lot of streams, rivers, water, that all indicate topography. So that's an area that we wanted to heavily focus on and look at. Another area that we looked at was utilities. So the utilities, we're calling this a constraint map, but I want you to look at it in two ways. So areas that have utilities, for example, for like right-of-ways or roadways that are going to be there in the future could, could limit areas, but they also show you where you may need to invest in utilities. They show gaps in those utilities that businesses may need to be able to, to grow there. So when you look at the, this map, we obviously couldn't put every water line size on the map, but we looked at sanitary sewer 12 inches and greater, and we looked at water lines eight inches and greater that are what are shown on this map. And what that shows you, and it makes sense, is that the sanitary sewer lines typically follow your creeks and waterways, and then your water lines are typically following your road. What we also highlighted in here are Duke Energy, and I know it's overlaid, so there's a lot of information on this map, but you can kind of start to see, once you overlay these items, how, where you have constraints. So the other item that we looked at, that we wanted to highlight today, are cultural sensitivity areas. So we looked at areas that have cemeteries, we looked at areas that have North Carolina Historic Preservation Importance and National Register Properties, and so those are shown here. And that's important because Forsyth County, as you all know, has a, has a rich history of cultural in the past, and I grew up here in the South, so I'm very familiar with it. My wife grew up here in Winston-Salem as well, so I enjoy the historic area of it, and I think most of the residents do as well. So what we did is we actually worked through multiple iterations of this, and we ended up identifying the areas that you see as what we would call stakeholder engagement areas and study areas. So these are larger areas, not site-specific, but areas that we felt like we could focus our search on in development. So when we started working through the stakeholder engagement process, we asked a lot of questions of our stakeholders, including county and city staff, about how to best identify these areas. And so what I was going to do today is tell you a little bit about how these areas came to fruition from this, from the stakeholder, and then the, what sites we were able to identify in them. In addition to that, what sites may need some improvements or have recommendations to help those sites become more viable for development. So what we heard in the stakeholder engagement findings is that currently, the opportunities are the I-74 corridor and the I-40 corridor. They're already being developed, that's focused in southeast Forsyth County. In addition to that, so in northwest Forsyth County along Highway 52, developers are interested in that area. And then again, the future Beltway, that's going to create a whole avenue of development there. So specifically in the Reevesville area and along Reynolds Road. So those are very important, and what I wanted to take away from that is the constraints that developers see. So southwest Forsyth County is more desirable for residential developments. So because you already have bedroom communities out there, you're working towards Clemmons and that area, so that's an area that you're not as interested in developing. It doesn't make as much sense to them. Utility extensions near Winston-Salem Beltway are being requested from the developers. So as the Beltway goes in, some of the utilities, such as water and sanitary sewer, that are going to be vital for development, need to go in along with that to make those sites viable. Redevelopment opportunities exist, and everyone's interested in redevelopment in the downtown area, in the urban area. However, some of the challenges for larger sites are going to be square footages of the buildings, so it's a challenge to knock down an entire city block and build a building back, right? So that's expensive. Some of the safety concerns that people talked about with us, and just the overall cost of redevelopment in downtown. So making sure that they, the developers can get enough out of that redevelopment to make it beneficial to them as well. So the main thing we wanted to take away that we've highlighted here from the constraints is that land is becoming more expensive, utilities become more expensive. As you heard with the EMS, everything has gone up in price in the past five years. So developers are currently balancing, how do we develop while still maintaining a profit margin that makes it viable for us? So what they said to us unequivocally was, we need to find a way to lower our upfront costs and risk to make sites viable for us to be interested in developing them. So that is kind of the takeaway, the main takeaway from those stakeholder engagement findings, is that the cost that they have to put out upfront, especially if they have to go get a loan, at seven or eight percent for money, it, then they have to raise the price, and there's only a certain amount people are willing to pay, so they have to make it viable. So with that said, we wanted to talk about how we actually ended up doing our study. So as we did the study, what we realized is, is that there are three different groups that most of the properties fell, fell within. So we have short-term developable, which we defined as one to three-year, meaning those sites usually have utilities there, the site has a parcel of land that's open, and it's prime for development. People are already somewhat interested in it, some developers are there, they're kind of looking at it, and they may even own some of them, but they're not ready to invest the dollars to actually expend right now to pay for that. The second group was the greenfield development, which is three to 10 years, and then the 20, 10 to 20 years. So those are separated, and the three to 10 years are areas that are close to utilities, close to intersection improvements, close to road improvements, that, that we think will happen once that first initial set sort of gets developed in that primary. The 10 to 20-year timeframe is more about areas in the future. So not today, maybe not tomorrow, but in the future, where you want to be looking at. So when roads are getting built through the Beltway extension or further out areas that at, over time, become more and more viable. So those are important to think about, not only today, what's available in the next one to three years, but what's your long-term outlook for the next 10 to 20 years? And then the, the final category is redevelopment. So industrial parks are areas without really requiring new investment as far as utilities or road improvements, items like that. So short-term developable, at a high level, and again, you have a very detailed report, which goes through each site and defines each one, but at a high level, we had three categories, or three areas that we focused on in the short-term developable. The map that you see on the screen gives you an indication of where they are, just to orient you within the county. So we had three there, Union Cross Site, Temple School Site, and the Reynolds Site. And so when we, when you see this, what I want you guys to understand is that there's a number here for 1.7 million square feet and structures. So you're probably wondering, how did you figure that out, right? How do we get to these numbers? Well, the answer is, is that we took a little, we didn't design your sites for you, but what we did do is we took all the constraints that we had, so that we talked a little bit about earlier, topography, streams, access. We actually looked at all of that, and we took a building, and we took a building square footprint that not only included a building, but it included the parking, included all the items that you need, and we actually laid those out and said, this is how many we think you can fit on this site, and that's what we came up with. So is this exactly how it would be designed? No, but it gives you an idea of what's really available on that site. So some sites, you may have to build a few more roads with internally to make that happen, but it gives you an idea of the size of available land that you may be able to utilize there. So with that said, so we looked at the Union Cross Site, and we had six structures that we were able to put on that site. The Temple School Site, we had two structures, and the Reynolds Site, we had seven structures. The Reynolds Site's important because it is already owned, it's already there, it's open land that can be developed. The question is, does, you know, is the current owner willing to continue to develop and invest in that property, or is there some way to get them to be more interested to do that, or sell a piece of that property off? So the short-term development recommendations are important here because one of the things that we heard, also, I've mentioned a couple of times already, is the water and sewer capacity availability. So not only is it important to have a water line there or sewer line there, it's important for developers to know that there's capacity in the system for them to be able to develop and actually utilize the system. So as we know that you guys are looking at new investments and the sewer systems in the area, it's important, depending upon what type of business comes in. So for example, if you're using a manufacturing facility, you may have a heavy focus on needing sanitary sewer capacity to be able to run your business and make things work. So being able to tell developers when they walk in the door, there's this much available for you, and then they, and they know that, and it's guaranteed to them, versus the question of, how much am I going to have to pay to improve your system? That's an important piece because we go back to the whole, the whole point of what we have really heard was lower our upfront cost. So if a developer has to invest in the sanitary sewer system to upgrade it for their needs, they want to know how much they're going to have to invest, and they want to know how long it's going to take. A lot of developers in the current market, so you may think, you know, certain things about industrial areas or data centers, they have to be first to market. They need to be first to market to sell their product to compete, so they want to know if that's a three-year upgrade, a five-year upgrade, or more than five-year upgrade. The other thing is about reducing environmental risk. So one of the things that's actually really going on over the past few years, if you've kind of been paying attention to this, kind of us environmental nerds are, but the way it works is that every administration, excuse me, has been kind of messing with how permits are done. Under the current administration, we define the waters of the United States, right? And that's the jurisdiction of the federal government. The waters of the United States have gone back and forth into what is a water of the United States, and then therefore, a federal nexus for permitting. Currently, under the current administration that we're in, if you are not contiguous to a stream, you're identified as not a jurisdictional water. Right now, the benefit of that is for developers, is that if you have a site, and we'll talk a little bit more about this with Tanglewood, but if you have a site that you go out and do a delineation on, and you identify streams and wetlands on your site, if you go to the Army Corps and you get a jurisdictional determination, that is good for five years. So if the new administration comes in and they say, we're going to go back and reverse that ruling, you still have time with that. So you can protect developers, and they're fully aware of what types of permits they're going to have to get, and it could help them design the site to avoid a federal permit. So that's an important piece to understand, that there are nuances and timelines to how permitting strategies impact the availability of development. The other thing I wanted to mention is for the Union Cross Art Site, we talked about potential for needing turn lanes there. There, that's the one site out of the three that probably you could design it in a way to utilize the existing intersections. There's also an argument to be made to really make that site viable, a right and left turn lane in the right locations would, would be beneficial. We have less than 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer expansion expected there, roughly a cost of $170,000. That cost that you see does not include purchasing easement for that, but it would be the cost of the extension of the utilities based on a linear foot number. The right and left turn lanes are approximately $650,000 for investment. So that's the type of dollars that your developers are looking at when they think about developing the site. So they look at the Union Cross Site, it's a good site, there's a lot of potential there. So they're looking at that, and they're saying, is it worth me investing $700,000 or $800,000 in utilities and road improvements? And maybe it is for 1.7 million square feet, maybe it's not for 400,000 square feet, right? So there's a barrier there. So for greenfield development, I wanted to talk about these sites at a high level. So we identified four sites, and these sites are, are, as you can see, located more to the east side of the county, and these are areas that could be designated for industrial or commercial park development, nearby existing developments. So our definition of what we became here is that there, you're near utilities, you're near the right intersections, you're near interstates, you're near where you need to be, but you do need to do some improvement to get there. So we have these sites, the Ridgewood Site, the Glen High Site, the Little John Site, and the Waukertown Site. You can see that these sites, based on, on this, are a little bit smaller in size, still relatively large, but looking at the topography, the constraints of the area, we came up with looking at each, three of the four, we were able to put two structures on the site, and one of them, we were able to put four structures on the site. And when we looked at the buildings, we focused on buildings that were somewhere around, our, our minimum we really wanted was 100,000 square foot, and then we went up to the largest we could find in sites was 500,000 in some of them. So that's a little bit different, the, so just kind of understand that, that concept there. And I wanted to talk about sort of what you could do for the, the greenfield sites with the three to 10-year recommendation. So as we talked about, I think one of the goals of this, and what you'll take away in the conclusion at the end, is that investment into the utilities into the right locations will help drive invest, and drive investment for economics. Creating preliminary development plans, they don't have to be fully designed, but a concept plan for the site will help developers see the value in the site. And I want to expand on that specifically a little bit when we get to Tanglewood, because I'm going to tell you exactly a scenario there of how developers look at things, and that's part of my job, being an engineer. I spent 25 years looking at sites, telling people whether or not they should develop them and design them, and that's a big part of my role. And when we look at things, we're looking at how difficult is this really to build on versus a site that may be a quarter mile down the road, or a site that may have incentives to help us build. But the other item is road improvements. So helping a developer identify exactly what those road improvements are going to be through, through coordination with the NCDOT. So some things that you can do upfront, if you know you want to build a site that's going to have 200,000 square feet of industrial, you can preliminarily do a traffic analysis so you can identify what the NCDOT may say, we think you need a right turn lane, a left turn lane, or a signalized intersection. We've done some of that analysis in our report to help you understand that, but coordination with the DOT to kind of finalize that. And the other thing is zoning ordinance upstate. So we've talked a lot about internally how to get developers interested. So right now, in Forsyth County, a lot of the areas we looked at have different zonings. A lot of them have ag zoning, for example. One of the statements in ag zoning is it discourages industrial development and commercial development because it doesn't want sparse development. So looking at potential areas that you could have a business district overlay with a conditional use, so that what you do in that point is you look at these areas, and you can have a conditional use requirement so that people have to come and actually get approval, but it's not a free-for-all that everybody can just develop business in all the ag. One of the things we heard loud and clear from the city staff specifically, and the, and the actual residents in the areas, they want to preserve the rural area of Forsyth County. So we don't want to, we're not promoting, go out and take everything that's agricultural and say, build what you want. What we're saying is take a very specific look on that guidance that we have, and see if there are ways in the zoning so that developers feel comfortable knowing that their, their development would be supported. So currently, like I said, in the zoning district, it says for ag, it says it's discouraged. So as somebody like myself, who a developer is hiring to develop a site, I read that in the zoning ordinance, and I think, is there another site that I can look at that maybe doesn't have some challenges with that? Because developers want to be in concert with the commission, with the board, the planning board, the planning teams, they don't want to be in opposition trying to develop sites that really don't have a future. So that's something to think about, those items. And it's very, though, important, I would say, to make sure that, and your staff here is great at this, I've actually developed many sites in Winston-Salem, I'm really making sure that the staff is in control of that, because like I said, you want to protect the county and the citizens, and you don't want just development wherever. So you want to be in control of that to a certain degree. So the next slide, I think the next slide? So for greenfield development, just to give you an idea, so we kind of averaged some of these. The waterline expansion, just to give you an idea, of 450 feet roughly costs about $150,000 to get everything set up. A sewer line expansion for 1,300 to 2,000 feet could be in the cost range of $275,000 to $425,000. And again, right and left turn lanes, about $650,000. So if you're a developer and you're looking at that, and you're saying, I just need a short waterline connect- So if you're a developer and you're looking at that and you're saying, I just need a short water line connection, I need a sewer line connection, and now I need a turn lane, I'm in this for over a million dollars. I haven't cleared a tree, I haven't created a site, and I have not done anything to help make me money, right? So what they're looking at is how much do I invest in those improvements, going back to what can be done, right? So that utility and infrastructure improvement extending to those sites, limiting those risks is very helpful to them. So the 10 to 20 years plus, we identified a number of sites here. So we had eight of eight sites. And out of these sites, four of them are kind of along the future beltway. The future beltway provides you an opportunity because, kind of going back to stakeholder engagement, for an industrial site, they want to be a quarter mile to no more than a mile from an interstate to limit the amount of turns and the amount of truck traffic that they have to get in the distance. In addition to that, they want to be, have water and sewer available with capacity. And the kind of final piece of that is they're looking for no, no less than 50,000 square foot building development. That's kind of the minimum square foot they're even interested in. Most developers are pushing towards 100,000 square feet and that goes back to the cost of development. So when they're looking at smaller buildings, it doesn't take your cost and make it a half or a third. You're really about two-thirds of the cost of getting to 100,000 square foot building already, maybe even more than that. Because you still have to do the road improvements, the sewer improvements, the grading, the clearing, all of those things. And you end up with a 50,000 square foot building versus 100,000 square foot building. So there's a cost-benefit analysis in every project that's being done by development. So these sites, like I said, most of them are areas that we think you need to think about in the future. Not today or tomorrow, the developers are already interested in. But what we were part of, what we were asked to do is look into, look forward. Don't look at just what we know, look at where we can go. And that's what we want to do here. We want to think about how Forsyth County can grow, define that development and that growth to help you see that. So in the 10 to 20-year recommendation, it's developing water and sewer connections to the site. I know that sounds like a broken record, right? But that's really an important key to all of this is that without utilities, it is very difficult to develop. So if you're a developer and you want to develop a commercial building or an industrial building or a major headquarters, building that on a septic system isn't really something people want to do anymore. It takes a lot of space, it takes a lot of maintenance, and people are looking for that water and sewer to be there. Again, create preliminary site pans. Again, that doesn't mean you have to design the site. Just people want to have an idea of what is possible. My experience tells me that when I take a picture to somebody and they're asking me, what can we do? And I show them a picture, it clicks with them. But it's hard for some people to see what a site can be. It's hard for, for people to digest that. So again, road and, road improvements and coordinating with NCDOT. And then this is something that we talked about internally is that, and this may be something that you wouldn't want to have more conversation about. But because you have the beltway coming, the reality is, is that there are certain areas of the beltway that you want to be rural and maintain rural and maintain that integrity of the county for sure. The truth is, is that the beltway is going to open opportunity. It, it just is. There's land by the beltway. So maybe within a half a mile to a mile of that beltway, having a business district overlay. And again, that could be something with a business district overlay that requires a conditional use or public approval of the projects. That still limits developers to some degree. But if they know that there's an opportunity that you guys are supportive of that, or putting the right conditions on it, that that could open that, those doors up even more because people know that it's going to get developed. And again, focus specifically within distances, right? So you maintain the rural feel of the Forsyth County, but as you get closer to the beltway, there's going to be more intense development. So the question becomes, you know, do you develop that with a target and a coals? Or do you develop it with more of an industrial type space that creates a better tax base? So looking at that to allow those developments to occur. So again, so we looked at the averages for these sites. So a waterline expansion of about 2,500 feet, that's about half a mile, is about $875,000. Sewer line expansions could range from 300 feet to a mile. So from 65,000, pretty low, to over a million. And again, turn lanes. And the one thing that's kind of not in here that we'll get to a little bit more in one second, is just an overall intersection improvement. So when we talk about intersection improvements, we talk about signaling an intersection because you're adding a right turn lane, a left turn lane, those types of things. And a general intersection improvement in today's dollars is around a million dollars, right? So that's what developers are thinking about. How do I get my trucks in? How do I get my trucks out? How do I get my workforce in, workforce out safely? And also that's what the DOT is going to think about her approving projects to go in. So Tanglewood Business Park, as we mentioned, was a, something, once we finished our report, we were asked to go back and take a second look at this. And I actually thought it was really interesting. And so what I wanted to point out here is that when you look at, on the top screen here, you see the, the plan you guys already have. And so we looked at the plan as, from our viewpoint. And we said, we looked at it and we said, okay, there's a lot of topography out here. There's also an area that we think is a stream. We don't know if it's real or not real. So what we did is we actually took a day and we went out and walked the site. And when I walked the site, I actually grew to like this site more and more. It didn't look very great just from an aerial perspective, which is a lot of developers are looking at. And I, when I went and walked the site, I thought, this is actually a pretty good site. And the reason is because from a topography standpoint and a stream standpoint, there is, in the larger building that you see, in the larger building footprint, there is a, it's an ephemeral stream that runs right through that building. And so like I said, kind of going back to the fact that that's not currently a jurisdictional water, allows that to be developed right now. In the future, that could change or that becomes a water of the US and that space becomes not viable. So people are trained to look at that. But we looked at this site, we actually did a very high-level grading on it just to get an understanding of, of the topo. We're looking at around 800,000 cubic yards of earthwork to really, to be able to develop the site. You have 169 acres, you have about 150 usable acres. You have, you have everything you need there. You have electrical there, you have water there, sewage, you have gas, you've got fiber infrastructure. Everything is there, so it's great. So there's a lot of positives to this site. The one thing is though, is that it is, and I don't have a great picture, but I do have one here, I'll show you. The, the great thing about this though, is it's kind of tucked right next to a neighborhood. It's on a residential street, it's, it's over a mile from the interstate. It's a little difficult to get there. You already have some light industrial going up though. And the light industrial that you see, kind of this picture blends in well with the community actually. So that you notice the buildings are limited in height, they're not overlooking the neighborhood. The road elevation out there is around 709. And then when looking at that road, we were kind of thinking that you want to keep your buildings around the same elevation as the roadway so that it doesn't overlook the neighborhoods and take over that development. So you have some elevations on the property in the rear that are lower, develop, lower elevation that you could have two or three-story buildings that would work out. We assume for industrial-type commercial development, about 20-foot for a story as opposed to residential, which is 12-foot, just because of the HVAC and systems you need. So with that said, for Tanglewood Business Park, the pros are you have space for development, utilities are on-site, you have made a significant investment in this property by the county. The opportunities that we see is at Middlebrook Drive and Idles Road, there needs to be a signalized intersection there. And the reason I say that is because where you go up the street and there is industrial development, there is a signalized intersection. So we said, well, could you go all the way down, go to that signal and then come back up the road? And the reality is, it starts to add about a mile and a half to a truck route, right down to residential roads. That's not really viable for a developer. At Dillon Industrial Drive and Idles Road, we also felt like that probably needs an intersection or a signal. And the reason is because trucks are coming in and out there today, low volume, not too much. But you start adding the volume of development, we're talking about 500,000 square foot buildings in there. They're going to need a signal to get in and out, the DOT is going to require that. So again, going back to that, that's a million dollars, right? Of, of, of a developer thinking about improvements. So jurisdictional determine, determination I mentioned. And so you can see the, the green, if you guys can, can bear with me, you see the green darker tree area that goes right up to the base of the ball field? Do you guys see that? So that's when we looked at this, we thought, that looks like a stream. And it's not currently under the current jurisdiction, right? So it can be developed right now. The question becomes in four years or six years, if there's a change in policy, that becomes a little more limited in development. So getting that jurisdiction done now and locking that in for five years could help you. We, again, there's about 800,000 cubic yards of earthwork to develop this site. And the one other thing that we think you could go ahead and do if you're interested is a consistent zoning to GI. So there's two zoning districts across the land today. Part of it is general industrial, which makes sense. But making that one complete zoning so that the developers don't have to worry about that would be an easy fix, something you could easily do. So that said, I wanted to talk a little bit more about what we talked about as far as the value of Tanglewood. And so JLL helped us create this and provided this to us. So they looked at this and how you would, what the lots are valued to you today undeveloped. So how much is this property worth today if you were to put it on the market? So they broke it down into each lot for us based on the building sizes and the other items. And when you totaled this out, it was roughly 4.1 million dollars, right? So you have an asset, a county asset today, that could go on the market for approximately 4.1 million dollars. So I think the balance there is for the county to decide how much do, do we want to invest based on what it's worth. We also know that in other areas in Gaston County, for example, if you go clear the land, then the value of the land goes up from about $35,000 an acre to about $70,000 an acre. The challenge with that though is now you have to clear the land and go through that process, right? So the value can go up. The question is, is it, you know, worth that investment? And the other items I wanted to mention, so I have a, I have a map here that I wanted to show you that I did not include in the presentation. So I was going to show you this. Oh, thank you. So I wanted to show you guys this. And this is sort of the transportation needs for the area. So if you notice, at the intersection of Middlebrook Drive and Idles Road, right now, you have, you know, a pretty decent intersection, but there needs to be expansions to that. A right turn lane would help, left turn lane. And at Idles Road and Dillon Industrial Drive, you see that it's just a two-lane road coming into the main entrance. So a right turn lane and a left turn lane there at a minimum, probably a signal would be best. The constraint with that, that I wanted to point out by the point of this map, is the fact that when you look at that, you notice that there is a railroad right here. And that railroad limits you from being able to widen the road in one direction. So you would have to widen the road towards residential homes to create that as a more viable intersection. So there's a question there and a balance of, does that make sense to do that in that location? And then the other item that we looked at was a secondary access off of Idles Road. And that intersection currently, you have space to continue to develop that and turn that into a better intersection. So those items, you could potentially get away with the right and left turn lane now. You may need to signalize them in the future. But I did want you guys to see that to understand the nuances of the difference there. So if you look at your other industrial parks throughout Forsyth County, most of them are within that mile of an interstate. They have a pretty straight line to get in and out for truck traffic. In addition to that, they have signalized intersections, they have the turn lanes they need along with the sewer and water capability they need. So those are all the things that drive the future growth of this. So I was going to take this off. Can you go back to the PowerPoint for me?
While you're queuing that up, I just, a quick question. Now you were mentioning a suggestion of, you know, changing from two zoning categories on the site to one. Do I understand correctly that would involve changing what is now light industrial to general industrial?
So the zoning today is general industrial and then there's a RS, residential zoning for a portion of the site. What I'm recommending is taking the residential zoning and converting that to the general industrial, which is a majority of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Where is the artist on that stuff? Where is the artist?
I don't have a map of it in front of me, but it's on the western portion of the property. I could get you that if you would like, but I don't have a map in the presentation.
I believe it generally follows the Duke Energy line. So everything south of that is RS and everything north of that is GI, I believe. It may be a little off that, but that's generally where it's at.
It's that little, yeah, I see a, a triangle and you have one building in that site.
Correct. And some parking, right.
Got it.
On this map, please place Middlebrook Drive.
On this map? Let me do that for you. Say Middlebrook Drive. Middlebrook Drive is, it's actually to the west, I wish I.
It's to the east.
It's to the, it's to the northeast. It's not shown on the map.
This map doesn't show it, so it's a little farther, yeah. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So that said, what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about, sorry, the cost estimations that we came up with. So just as a high level for you guys to understand the level of investment that we're talking about, potentially depending upon what you guys decide to do as the commissioners in the county, but what developers are thinking about, is the current market value we talked a little bit about of the identified parcels which you have in, in your packet. But we talked about average mile cost of extending utilities. So just so you know, about a quarter mile extension of water lines and sewer lines, roughly 250 to 300,000 dollars. The right and left turn lanes, about 650,000. And the signalized intersection, which would include right turn lanes typically, about a million dollars. So keep in mind that all of those things are going to require the purchase of land to widen intersections or add turn lanes. And typically in, in these areas, that's something that developers are looking at, right? Certain need, because sometimes they can't acquire land to get a right turn lane or a left turn lane in. So that's one of the things that is an uncertainty to them. So the conclusion is, is that you have unique opportunities. People like Forsyth County, you're in a great position location-wise in the state geographically. You're not, you're not far from Charlotte, you're not far from Durham and Raleigh. You kind of sit in a sweet spot. You have a very, very, very good workforce here. So the other thing that we heard from the stakeholders quite a bit was all of the investment in education here, especially with the community colleges, is phenomenal. John Deere talked to us about that, saying that their employment in the schools here actually take the curriculum that they need and put it in the education so that they can get employment. So things like that are not standard, that's unique to you guys. That is very unique to Forsyth County. The fact that in addition to all of that, one of the things that they also said is your staff is easy to work with. They like working in Forsyth County because the staff makes sense, they're easy to work with, they make good decisions, they have good heads on their shoulders, and they don't make it overly challenging to develop. That is great because I worked in Charlotte for a long time, we do make it overly challenging to develop. I'm just going to tell you. And other locations are the same way. So I actually, I'm working on a project and we are in the middle of nowhere, trying to buy 1,100 acres, closest house is a mile away. And we cannot get a zoning, we can't get a zoning district. So those types of things happen. And I think that when people are looking at those things, they're, have experiences like myself and it does take them a little bit to think about through what it's going to take timeline because like I said, timeline is important. So your short-term developments are going to be centered around the I-74 and the I-40 corridors and the Highway 52 corridors that already exist. You have the greenfield development areas exist within close proximity to utility connections with minor additional development potential. And then you have greenfield that's going to be the future, which are going to be typically located along the future beltway for other corridors that are developing, but just not quite there yet. The redevelopment opportunities is something that we really wanted to focus on and really try to get there. But we weren't able at this point with the amount of open land that you do have, that people are interested in developing. Right now, just the volume that people would need to be able to redevelop downtown in the urban area for removing the buildings and building buildings doesn't give them the square footage that they would like to see. So, and what was important to take away from all this, you noticed I sort of talked about the four categories that we wanted to find. As we went through this, what we found is that essentially the land you have, you could use for any of the categories. It's who wants to develop there and what, what a talent you want. In your packet, you will notice we did focus on two things that are a little unique that we didn't cover here today. But one of the areas was around the hospital. You have a very good, in my opinion, probably the best hospital. As I've told the team here, and I was listening to your EMS speech, my mother-in-law, she had a brain aneurysm here in Forsyth County. She lived in Sherwood Forest. And she was the one person that survived from, her doctor told her she was never going to leave the hospital. She's been here with us eight more years, had a great life with my, my kids and I can't be more thankful for it. I myself was treated, I was treated at Winston-Salem Baptist Health for a medical emergency. So I can't say enough great things about your healthcare system here. And that said, you have an opportunity with that for growth. And we did identify some specific areas that you could develop smaller areas. And we did identify some specific areas that you could develop smaller areas for kind of commercial development, whether those are MRI areas, what you want those to be, but that's always going to be a focus of this town. Living in other locations, people still know about Wake Forest Baptist Health. When I had a medical emergency and a medical issue, my wife called her dad, who called her doctor, and he said, "I'm going to get you in with these guys." And I was in there within a week, and I got treatment, and it saved my life. So, you know, I live in Charlotte, I couldn't get an appointment for six months. So just be aware that there are certain things for development that you guys have that big cities don't have. And that's where your charm is. You have the art district, you have people who want to be downtown, you have the development, you've got all of these things happening. So just focus on that and know that you have these opportunities. And the takeaway is, focus on how you can lower that upfront cost and risk for developers. That is going to drive where your development goes. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to make millions of dollars of investment, but strategically investing your dollars to extend the utilities, to look at intersections, to know that when the developer comes to you, that they have the capacity and availability for the water and sewer systems, and know that they can get the road improvements they need, and helping them do that and looking at that upfront will drive development. So, any questions?
Got a quick one. Did you read our review of Legacy 2045?
We did.
As a part of that?
We did, we absolutely did.
Because we have not actually officially adopted that, the city council has, partly because we were kind of waiting on this to see if there's some part of this that could be infused in that to help sort of, before doing that. So, got a comment on that?
Yeah, sure. So we looked at that a lot, actually. And we wanted to be, two things out of that. We wanted to be cautious, because we felt like that is a good plan. And we didn't want to take anything and derail that plan, because there's a lot of effort put in it, and it makes sense, and we like the plan. I think for us, the, what we wanted you to take away from this, or maybe the two keys that aren't in that Forward 2045 plan in a detailed way, are thinking about the industrial areas while you're balancing the preservation of the rural and agricultural, and focusing on how to get the zoning to work for those areas. So like I said, one of the things, and this is not a negative of, you know, the zoning ordinance, it's just is, that a lot of the sites we talked about are agricultural. Under there, I think it's bullet number two, it specifically states, "We don't want industrial, commercial, and agricultural." So that's a deterrent, right? So is it, so when we talk about thinking about new ways to think about that, so limiting a business corridor district or development district around the Beltway to a certain area, right? So now, obviously, you don't want that three miles, four miles away, and everything's available. Or specific locations where you have utilities are going to extend utilities and making specific business overlay districts, that you still have some, you know, ruling over and jurisdiction over can create what that looks like. But the developers aren't feeling like they need to come in and do a forward zoning and sell you on it to begin with. Like, you're there, how do you work it out? And I think that's one of the, one of the things that should be infused into that plan.
Good, thank you. Other questions?
I had a question about your, your look at Tanglewood Park in particular. You had some suggestions as to why that some complications could be, could be addressed with earlier action, but it also sounded like you're candidly saying there are transportation access difficulties for that area that, you know, industrial developers don't want to have to deal with, and that really we're stuck with those.
What I would say to that is, I think the site is definitely viable for development. I would not say that it's not. I think the question is, is that if I'm a developer, and I'm looking at the other sites along the highway corridors that we talked about, those are better sites at the moment. That doesn't mean that in three years, that those sites aren't gobbled up and being developed, and this site isn't a great site to do that. But for now, if I'm looking at that, and I'm looking at the road improvements I have to do, and the volume of earthwork, and the clearing, and, you know, I'm kind of looking at it, I'm thinking, "That's farther down the road for me. It's not a priority, because I need to be first to market." That doesn't mean that it's not a viable site, and those cannot be overcome. But if I'm a developer, and I come to you, and I want to talk to you about Tanglewood, and I want to say, "I'm interested in this. You guys have put a lot of money here, you've invested in this, here's what I want to do with it." What I'm hoping you would say back to me is, "We're aware that there's some challenges here, and we want to work with you on those." So that they know that you're partnering with them, and they don't have to come in and say, "Well, the DOT is going to make us widen this from a two-lane to a four-lane, and we got to do two intersections improvements, and what about buying property from this over there to get a right-turn lane in?" So what they're looking for is a partnership to make that more viable, whereas now, just kind of looking at it from an aerial, without actually going out there and seeing it, it's kind of not the prime site I would be looking at.
And a follow-up question to that is, you know, the pushback that we get about that site's development always includes an element of you're going to be routing substantial additional traffic through existing, existing streets that serve residential areas. Is, do you see a way that it could be developed for industrial without that complication, or are basically the, you know, are the critics right that that is going to create a lot of additional load on those, those streets?
So my answer to that would be that I think there's one street, and I have a picture of it here. So when we look at that, the intersection of Idles Road and Hampton Road is probably a good example of an intersection improvement that would make sense. But what you notice is that when you get to Middlebrook Drive, oh, yep, thank you, sorry about that. When you get to Middlebrook Drive and Clemmons Drive, you'll notice that the road sort of narrows down, right? So I think that there is one road you're going to get more traffic on. That road is already widened up at the interstate, so you're talking about another half a mile of widening. But I think you could avoid going down most of the residential streets. I also think light industrial, similar to the development that's already out there, that doesn't have heavy truck traffic, like, I don't think you want an Amazon distribution center there. It's probably not where you want to go. But if you could mix office commercial, or you could mix more light industrial, or have like a Continental Tire, like headquarters, things like that, they make a lot of sense there. And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't say that those would impact traffic to the, people are always, I've been, I've done, I don't know, 200 rezonings in my career, and I've never not heard somebody say that traffic was going to end the world. So far, the world hasn't ended. That said, yeah, there's going to be more traffic, but I think if the roads are designed to take on that traffic, it's okay. I think you do always limit the ability for residential homes that live on those roads to get out. And, you know, that's unfortunate, but I think if you develop it in the right way, you have multiple entrances and exits to come out, you do start to minimize some of that. So I think developing it with light industrial, and focusing not on an Amazon distribution facility, these mega facilities, you could balance what you need to do there.
All right. So that would, in effect, be a recommendation to consider going from GI to LI?
You could, both would allow similar things, so either way would work.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on that, at another time, when we were dealing with a different zoning matter, actually, look, if Idles Road actually ends right down at Peace Haven, if you take, come into town. And if the bypass, when, when and if, it's a careful statement, if it ever gets completed, the Western Terminus is actually right, almost right there at where you'd actually be able to get on that and access 40, which would be, you could handle any kind of traffic and go basically anywhere you wanted to by, and use Idles Road as the key thing. Then you avoid the Middlebrook, you know, all the way, you know, up to that path to the interstate. And, but, and at the time, I remember DOT was giving opinions and said, you know, I remember our, our former traffic engineer saying, "Well, probably, and about, the good bet is that that could be kind of going about 10 years, 10 to 12 years, that's a reasonable timeframe." Not a reasonable timeframe anymore. I mean, it's been, it's been backed off. So 10 to 12 would have been perfect, probably, for what was being discussed, but it's, that's an issue. That would make a big difference.
It would, and that, and that changes the equation, right? So the question becomes, and I'm, I'm not the board, right? And I'm not an employee. The question becomes, how long do you hold on to the property? How much do you invest into it versus how much it's worth today? So, you know, for what it's worth today, is it worth thinking about that? You put money into it, you own it, right? So there's a lot of positives there. The question becomes is, how long do you wait for that specific developer to come in, or do you start marketing pieces of it? Or do you look at that and say, "This is an investment we made, but we can turn it around for X dollars," right? And maybe use that money to make some other improvements elsewhere? So those are questions you have to think about. I'm not, I'm not, once you've made an investment into a property, it's hard to get rid of it, right? And then, it will eventually happen. The question is, is that five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now? And how long do you want to wait for that to happen? It doesn't mean that it's never going to happen, and it could happen. You never know. You could get, you know, that somebody walk through the door any day. But the, the reality is, is you're probably looking at it more longer term to make it more viable to more people than the single person who may want that specific site.
I do have a question, Jim, I want to ask. Thank you for a great report, and specifically, I want to turn your attention to the new Walker Town potential development site. Of course, that is located in what we know as District A, which I directly represent, but definitely homegrown, I say homegirl of Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, and so I'm very cognizant of how, if we can definitely be more intentional about going into District A to provide more opportunities like this, Forsyth County can be that much better, in my opinion. So in saying that, it looks like industrial development could be ideal for this part of the county, based on the new Walker Town site. Am I correct in assuming that?
So, yeah, to a degree. So what I would say is, when we looked at the areas, and we were looking at the entire county and breaking everything down, we were trying to find specific areas and sites. So yes, there's, it's hard to say that an entire area should be industrial, right? But the site, there is opportunities along that corridor for there to be industrial development that makes sense to fit within the neighborhood and fit within the uses there that make sense today.
Okay, great. So that's a great place to start, and I'll take that piece, because there's an, there's an opportunity there. So my two main concerns, as someone who directly, you know, engaged in this community and have lived in this community, represent this community, the level of community engagement that we have with making sure the citizens are aware of this potential industrial development, so that we're all clear what the opportunities are, what some of the challenges are, and I think when you were discussing initially what this industrial site plan could bring to our county as a whole, there was some language, like on certain parts of the county where better, or I would say, different communities, but the language "better" community sent up a flag to me, as someone who's from the other part of the community. What does that mean if I'm coming from the outside and we use that language? So I think that when we're looking at trying to extend these opportunities throughout Forsyth County, the language is going to be very essential to attracting folk on the eastern part or the District A part of our county. And believe me, you, I have gone through it on the school board, where people think some schools are better than others. Oh, absolutely not. They are all the same with different opportunities for our children and families. So I think that we just need to really, I mean, I'm super excited to see that there is an opportunity like this for the northeastern part of our county, and I look forward to staying abreast and ideally connecting right now with some of the citizens in this area about how can we be an open partner with a development opportunity like this.
Yeah, so, Terrence, I agree 100% with what you just said. So the term "better" in this case was, was really meant just for, and so, better for industrial-type development or better in communities. So probably should use a different word, that wasn't the intent, so I do apologize for that.
Oh, I got you, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, but absolutely. And I do think, that is one thing. So one of the things that we talked about in the study with, with the team a lot was, so how do we, how do you handle that with the public, right? So we did this with certain, right, certain stakeholders. So we talked to Front Street Capital, we talked to Williams Development, we talked to Greater Winston-Salem, we had your, your team, so the city, county staff. And then in addition to that, we talked with John Deere. So we talked with stakeholders. The challenge is, is how do we think about the next step? Which is within the community and telling people about this, because the thing is, is that there's pros and cons, right? So, and the message of how it gets delivered and when it gets delivered is very important. So if we just were to publish this map and put it on a site, I don't, people might be like, "Well, now you've said my site has to be industrial, nobody," you know, so it limits things. The other view with that is, is that if you tell them, then maybe their value goes up, and people say, "Well, you didn't pick mine, why didn't," you know? So it's very, so thinking about the next steps of this is, is an important recommendation, because one of the goals that we had in this is that not to scare or frighten the public in any way, or to play favor to anyone who owned any pieces of property anywhere. So how this gets to the next step and what that engagement looks like is something that I would recommend to really be thought about in a detailed way, so that it becomes what you want it to be, and it doesn't drive conversations in an opposite, opposite manner.
And out of all of those stakeholders, one that I said, "Oh, he didn't include the Northeast Ward Councilwoman." Like, there's nothing you can do without connecting absolutely to that level of leadership, and then that leadership connects you, you know, to even more, what I say, relevant stakeholders, so that everybody is on the same page.
Right, understood.
Other questions? I, I look forward to looking through the detailed report. I was doing just a little scanning there, parts of it. So, a lot of good work on that, and we certainly have, very thorough, and it's exactly what I was hoping for, anyway.
Well, good. Well, thank you very much. Like I said, we enjoyed this and appreciate the opportunity.
Good. Great, thank you. I think we are at a point of ending.
I think so.
Thank you. We'll be back shortly.